We'll go ahead and call a meeting to order here for Tuesday, December 17. I want to thank everyone for coming. Please turn off your cellphones or turn them to silent. If you have to have a conversation, please do that out of the hallway. If there's anyone here who would like to address the council who is not on the agenda, there is a sign up sheet on the podium here. Feel free to come up at any time and put your name on there. Before we go into our invocation and our pledge of allegiance, I would like for us to take a moment of silence to honor, at least in the legal community, a real legend of Pascagoula, and that is Melvin Mitchell. Melvin Mitchell served for thirty-five years, at least, as the city attorney, his first full-time city attorney. Melvin was renowned, at least among lawyers, for his knowledge and his insight, and I know that many council members and mayors and staff relied upon him for insightful, broad advice on a number of issues that related to municipalities in general and the city in particular. Melvin, even after illness forced his retirement, was a wonderful person to talk to on the phone and was one of those people who had an opinion about everything, but you didn't feel like you had an opinion about everything. But he certainly is somebody who will be tremendously missed, and we really, our hearts go out to his family members, who, most of whom are in the Jackson area. His services will be, I don't have it off the top of my head, but I understand, will be, if not this weekend, sometime next week. But in any event, before we go into our invocation and our pledge, please just bow your heads for a moment of silence to remember Melvin Mitchell. All right, with that, we'll go ahead and have our invocation by Councilman Willie Jones and the pledge of allegiance by Councilman Scott Sipper.
Little vow of heads, our heavenly Father, our Lord, our God, thy excellent is thy name in all earth. We come again tonight to thanksgiving in our hearts and our minds this beautiful time season. We want to stop now and thank you, rejoice and give you praise for your son, Jesus Christ, our Lord, the Savior of this world we thank for. Because of him we'll steward this great city, which you have given us. We pray for the Mitchell family, that you will touch them now and then in the midst of their sorrow and sadness. We need you here tonight in this council. We pray for this councilship, this city, again, as we come to the end of this season, but never your grace, never your love. In Jesus' name we pray and we thank you, son. Amen.
Amen. Please bow in the praise of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Does any member of the council have an amendment to the agenda?
Firstly, I'd like to remove seven B for discussion.
Seven B is Victor?
Victor, yes.
And let's, if it's all right, let's move that to eight A under city manager. Does any other member of the council have an amendment to the agenda? Does the city manager, acting city manager or the acting city attorney have an amendment to the agenda? All right, with that, subject to the pulling from the consent agenda of seven Bs and Victor to eight A, is there a motion to approve the agenda as amended? All those in favor who signify by saying aye, and opposed. All right, next will be mayor's youth council. Do we have any members of the mayor's youth council here? All right, if you would, please stand up, tell us your name, what school you attend, what grade you were in, and what office you hold, if any, at the youth council.
I'm a junior quarter in the tenth grade in the high school.
I'm James Coe from Senior Resurrection. I'm the mayor, high school mayor of the council.
I appreciate both of y'all being here. Thank you for all the work that you do and the time that you put into the mayor's youth council. All right, business spotlight. Been a long time coming, but it's certainly well deserved. Grand Magnolia Ballroom Suites.
Nestled among century-old Oak and pine monitaries sits the great primary of Ballroom and Suites in Pascagoula. Originally built in eighteen ninety-four, the home has been completely restored to its original slender and now functions as an event menu and bed and breakfast. The Grand Magnolia Ballroom Suites is located on Agni Street, in the heart of the soaring downtown district of Pascagoula, only one block away from downtown shopping and dining. Owner and innkeeper, Amy Jenwood, strives to maintain the old-world charm and heritage of the home while adding luxurious and modern amenities. Guests can choose from one of seven rooms that are themed to popular tourist destinations from New Orleans to Key West. During your stay, guests have full access to the home, including the kitchen, parlor and dining rooms. Events at the Grand Magnolia range from weddings, holidays and birthday parties, or corporate dinners. Clients can choose from a variety of packages that include both the inn and ballroom, or one or the other. Reservations for bed and breakfast can be made online or in person, and wallroom viewing is by appointment only. Check out their website at www.grandmagnolia.com for more information on the Grand Magnolia Ballroom and Suites in Pascagoula.
I know Amy and Richard, the two of you are here tonight. If you want to come up and say a few words, you could probably say a lot more about this than anybody on this council could.
I would go, Amy brought me here to speak for her. She actually is innkeeper and she does great job for me, so I'm proud of you. It's very much for this honor, we really appreciate it. It does mean a lot to you, because to be appreciated by the city, it does mean a lot.
Well, thank you. We appreciate the investment that you and Amy made years ago.
If you're not Eminem bankier, they own most of it.
I mean, you took, you literally took, and I remember it, most people do, was the KC Hall, Knights of Columbus Hall. And it was in poor shape, rundown organization, just unfortunately didn't have the resources to do it, and you swooped in, you and Amy, like guardian angels, pun intended.
Well, we moved over from Kent Island too, so.
Oh, okay, all right. But in any event, I just remember it as KC Hall, had probably Jennifer and other people at Pascal High School, had my prom there. And so it was a great location, and we are so glad that you kept it up and took it to another level and turned it into something that we're proud of.
Well, I know, I went to a lot of hijinks balls there, and you know, courses June is free now, but back then it was hijinks. And you can still see the original terrazzo entrance floor in the courtyard, it's still there and everything like that, so there are still remnants of that old dance hall building.
All right. Well, thank y'all very much, we appreciate it.
Good luck with everything you got to do tonight.
All right, the next item on the agenda, six A, Mr. Scruggs, you are up. This is to approve the minutes for the Pascal Planning Board meeting of December eleven. Is there a motion to, or unless a member of the council has a question about the minutes, is there a motion to approve the minutes for the Pascal Planning Board meeting of December eleven?
Make the motion to approve the planning board minutes.
Is there a second? Second from Councilman Fournette. Amy, for the discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye and opposed. All right, the next item is the request of rezoning of parcels of land located between Douglas and Ingalls Avenue and Western Martin Street from single-family residential six to multifamily residential three.
The first item was submitted by Duncan Noble. What we're zoning was four parcels that he owned. Two of the parcels are already zoned MR3, but the larger two parcels are zoned SFR6. MR3 is a mixed-use residential or mixed-residential, and SFR6 is a single-family residential. The, Mr. Noble had indicated that he's not really planning to develop this property himself, but instead is trying to convey it. He's owned it for a number of years, trying to market it, and he has not had any real interest on it as single-family residential. He spoke at length at the planning board meeting, indicating that, you know, try, it just can't happen. But their application to rezonate is to provide more flexibility. There are a number of uses allowed in MR3 that would give additional options, and he thinks it would be more attractive if zoned accordingly. The, in, the primary concern from my end, my department, is that the MR3 zoning allows for multifamily. And we've had a conversation here as late as a couple of weeks ago at the previous board meeting, and just things that come up. You know, Pascagoula has more than its fair share of multifamily residential. There is a study that's done each year by Gulf Regional Planning Commission, GRPC, is called An Apartment Study, and it outlines the number of apartments Pascal has, as well as what all the other cities have across the Gulf Coast. We have the number of apartments per capita similar to Biloxi, Gulfport, but we also have, you know, much more residential, much more multifamily residential than any of our Jackson County counterparts. I believe Iron, you look at Ocean Springs and Goshay, and they're at like twenty to one, twenty apartments per each individual, while Pascagoula is more along one apartment for every seven individuals, a lot higher number per persons, which, you know, we've got approximately thirty-five hundred units in town right now. Now, Mr. Noble has done some research, and I think he'll address it later as far as the number of vacancies that he thinks are out there. I looked strictly off this study that's done on an annual basis, and it says that Pascal has approximately eleven percent vacancy, which is considered somewhat high, or at least it's not tight, it's not low, as opposed to, you know, about four or five percent you'll see in other cities across the Gulf Coast. So we've got a high vacancy rate, which really doesn't show a real heavy need. Now, I will admit, when you go through this study, it's a good study, I use it on a regular basis, it outlines when these units were built, and when you research it, you'll see that the majority of apartments Pascal were built in the sixties, seventies, a handful built in the eighties, and then, you know, three or four units built post-Atreona. However, you know, the vast majority of our complexes were all built in the nineteen seventies. They do need some substantial update, but I'm not sure that creating additional supply would really, you know, cause those units to be updated. What we would like to see is some updating of those units, potentially use those existing MR3 sites, get rid of some of the existing apartments, build them back to code, build them back to where they're actually above BFB, or do something correctly with them, and not, you know, continue to put Band-Aids on some of these structures. But, you know, today what we're talking about is the rezoning of this property, and based on the availability of units and the number of units we have in general, I am not convinced that the city needs to rezonate sixty acres of land from a single-family residential to a multifamily residential. The need, the standards that are set for rezoning identify a public need and a change in neighborhood character or a mistaken zoning. There is no mistaken zoning on this, we really cannot argue that in any way, and I don't think Mr. Noble has mentioned that. He has identified a change in neighborhood character, primarily identifying the additional need that's associated with the increase in employment as some of our expansion facilities, whether it be, you know, the East Bank or other industrial partners. So, but that in itself, you know, doesn't necessarily mean we need additional multifamily housing. And when you look at the apartments that have been built in the past, they're on O'Mobile, Pascal Street, and other areas that are not in the immediate vicinity. The closest thing we have that would qualify as multifamily is a spread in condos, but those constructed as townhomes, which are actually allowed in SFR6, so those would not really provide evidence of a change in neighborhood character because they're allowed in the existing zone SFR6. My recommendation to the planning commission, or the planning boards, was a denial of this application, and the planning board concurred with that recommendation. And that's the position that staff is providing to you. We do receive a couple of letters from citizens that objected to it. There were a handful of people in attendance. Nobody came up and spoke and registered their name, but there were a handful of those in attendance at the planning board meeting last week. But I know Mr. Noble is here, and he's done his homework, and I'm sure he's got some information for you. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to try to answer them now or after Mr. Noble speaks.
All right, before we hear from Mr. Noble, is there anyone here who wishes to speak in opposition to the requested zoning change for the property located between Douglas and Ingalls Avenue?
Do I get to go first?
No, sir. You want to hear what other people have to say so you can respond.
Okay. I know what they're thinking.
I know. Yes, sir, if you'd like to come up.
Can I just sit here?
Well, we're trying to tape video of meetings, and we don't have a mic. I mean, if you want to stand up, speak loud, that's fine, just so we can hear you. If you, first of all, tell us your name and where you live.
Little Smacks, and it's my wife Marsha. We live on Jonathan Street, and it's backed up to the woods, our house does. We just object to any more apartments, you know, especially in the woods right there, because surrounded by houses, he said it's all them or free land, whatever, but yeah, surrounded by houses on just about every side except for the school side. And we just do not want apartments in the narrow woods down there, build apartments there. We've got all the trash here, the empty. Anyway, that's our objection, we just don't want apartments.
All right, thank you. All right, if there's no one else to speak in opposition to the proposal, is there anyone here to speak in favor of the request of rezoning between Douglas and Ingalls Avenue? Mr. Noble?
Ready?
Question, sir, are you ready?
Sir.
Okay, well then, the floor is yours.
Thank you. All right, let's see. TD Jakes, saw him on TV here a couple of weeks ago, and he said you can change your hair, you can change the phone, you can change your car, but nothing ever changes to change your heart. I might not be able to change all your hearts, but I'm asking for you to have an open heart and an open mind. What we are looking at today is not what we were looking at in nineteen seventy-seven, when the same body put a mortuary. And it's, a lot of changes have happened on the Gulf Coast. Look, what has happened is that we have not had any new, very little new, either residential, single-family, or multifamily construction. And it goes back to what happened in the late seventies, when Ingalls had twenty-five thousand people, my, that's life working Ingalls during that time. And it was crazy that there was a need, but the market moved on, and just as they set the mortuary and placed no more multifamily, by the time they'd done that, the market had already taken into consideration. I didn't, I'm kind of changing my act a little bit here, so I want to talk a little bit about, go through what I presented to the planning commission next week. Also, I want you to be open-minded, please, because I am willing to make a modification to what I'm asking for. So getting in, I'm getting, I wanted to kind of back into some of this. There was only two letters that were written. One of them was a person, I think it used to be on this board, on this body, and the other one was Tiffany Strong, one of my finer competitors. But I'd like to just kind of cover this a little bit. This is a letter that was filed with Donovan from David Tadlock. I don't know. But I'll get down it from the, from the cover into the body. I'm writing to you to voice my opinion and give written notice to the fact that I am against any further rezoning of any available, of any available land in our city that is currently marked single-family residence to any other zoning that allows multiple dwelling complexes, such as apartments, especially those earmarked for section eight use. Kind of a misnomer. Our city is well saturated into section eight. You don't build apartments anymore for section eight. Our city is well saturated with this type of structure already, and there are still In truth, if you can get ninety-five percent occupied in a multifamily, what little I know about multifamily, been in the real estate business for a long time, I don't manage multifamily. I manage, we manage some commercial, we manage mostly single-family. Our office does. But if you have an apartment unit with anything over twelve or sixteen units, buildings, units in a couple of buildings, if you have them ninety-five percent occupied, that's, you can't get any better than that. You're going to always have some kind of turnover. Our city is well saturated with this type of structure already, and there are still vacancies. This particular area is more than saturated, see photo from Google Maps, and would be a potential, talking about our property, and would be a potential negative impact on the school, much less the neighboring homes. To allow this would not have very little, if any, positive economic impact in our city in the short term, and I would suspect that it will be a negative one long term. Okay, that's the body of Mr. Tadlock's letter. I just checked on just one apartment complex, one of many apartment complexes that are spread around this city, our city. By the way, I was born here, I was raised here, went to high school, high school here, attended Jackson County Junior College, when it was still Jackson County Junior College. This is my home, I just have to live across the river. Anyway, just checking with the tax app on Colonial Manor Apartments, which is on Presley, Presley and Love, okay? Coming off of Love, Parson's Ridge, coming off of a little access from Presley. Parshals, parshals, excuse me. They're three parshals. If you check taxes on that, if you pull up one, if you pull up one parcel in there and you saw it was twelve thousand nine hundred and eighteen dollars, you just think that's a bunch of money, that you can't, that you're not true. There's three parshals in that complex. The next one is twenty-four thousand nine sixty-three, and the third one's ninety-five forty-four, and taxes a year on that one apartment complex is forty-seven thousand four hundred dollars. Thank you very much. Now, I don't know how much the city gets out of that forty-seven thousand. I don't know how much the school district gets out of that forty-seven thousand, but the county gets it, but I would imagine it's a bunch, okay? So I'm just, I would like to use Colonial Manor as an illustration to kind of condense a whole bunch of stuff that we were talking about last week. I don't, I don't want to get in the whole, you know, I want to try to condense this and make it smooth as possible. But mainly here right now, we have two letters from two different people, Tiffany Strong and Mr. Tadlock. We have some people in the audience that said we don't want apartments. Young man over here said he didn't want a apartment. He lives on Jonathan Street, the only little part around our whole property that is not bordered by multifamily. So when I went in originally, the business was done a couple of months ago, I was, I had no idea all this had changed. Here I am, I'm in the business, you know, but I looked at the map, and lo and behold, we're surrounded. Rule number one in zoning change is, you don't spot zones, okay? So this is, this is north, this is south. This is our two parshals, and we also own these two over here, so we're split-zoned right now. This is our, this is about fourteen, this is about fifteen and a half acres. We own another half acre over here, okay? So you see the brown, we're surrounded by that. This is school over here. The school district can be, they say it can be a use for residential, different, the different zoning in residential zones, multifamily or six or eight or ten. So anyway, this is school system, Pascal's school system. So we're effectively zoned like, we're outzoned from that, and this is Jonathan Street, okay? Young man over here said he didn't want to lose his woods. Be glad for your buy, brother. Be glad for your buy. We owned this property in nineteen, in two thousand, two thousand and three, and Mr. Melvin Mitchell got this, those on this deal.
Was that not the, it was actually an auction from the city, and it was a park, a known park, and auction off, is that when you bought?
I bought, we bought one parcel, the Ingalls parcel from the city. And then we acquired in due time, we acquired the other three, wanting to square up because it was so narrow on that side of the little drainage over there, okay? So where did I have, so we, I saw this, talked to Donovan, and I told him, I said, oh, wow, lots of things have changed here. And I told Donovan at that time, I will be open, honest, fair, I won't hide nothing. I gave him a copy of everything. We sent letters to all the, a little short letter to everybody that's around us, and said, if you've got any questions about what we are, who we are, what we want to do, just call me. Same time the city sent theirs out, we sent that. So they got copies of that in the file. So we, we, no, we don't have, we don't have a, oh, what I wanted to also mention is that we have, the thing about single-family has come up in multiple cases, and this is sixteen acres. Now, I am not a true developer. I don't want to get into the developing business, it would lay my life to the ground, a real estate developer. Excuse me, my throat just got dry. Anyway, what, what all the developers tell me, tell us, is that, number one, it's not big enough. Sixteen acres in Ocean Springs, sixteen acres in the middle of Lacy, different conversation. But in Goshay or even Pascagoula, we are in a different market. Y'all, we, us, because I say us because we bought this from y'all, we, us, we are in a different market in Pascagoula. Pascagoula and, to a lot of extent, Goshay is so different than the rest of the Gulf Coast. How different? It's so different that I sold a house less than a year ago to a couple that's going to retire and move into it next year, because they live in North Alabama, and she's still working for the state of Alabama, but they come down on weekends because it's on the water. And they go to the casinos, or they go to the restaurants in Biloxi, and he said, this is about once or twice, people asking, server asking, where do you live at? I live in Goshay. Oh, no, 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 you shouldn't be there. People don't know nothing about Will Street, but they have, we have, our part of the world right here on the East Gulf Coast, we have a negative image on, because we're not like the rest of the Gulf Coast, and we can't be like the rest of the Gulf Coast. The Gulf Planning Commission may want us to be like the rest of the Gulf Coast, but we're not like the rest of the Gulf Coast. We're entirely different. We had twenty-five thousand people at Ingalls back forty years ago, over forty years ago, and we may never get back, they say we'll never get back there again, but we're fixing to have, thank God, we're fixing to have a bunch of people over here on the east side. So that's going to be more people. Whenever you have an apartment complex, and I can go down every one of these apartment complexes. Whenever you have an apartment complex, and I can go down every one of these apartment complexes all around the city. They are constrained because this new zoning puts so many of them in residential zoning. Bay Powers on Market Street, it's residential, y'all. Now how are they gonna grow? How can they ever expand? Oh, well, what if a hurricane came along, or a tornado, or a fire? Sorry, you don't get to build that. Colonial Manor is in a residential zoning. What if it was, what if it was not in a residential zoning? You would open up a lot of opportunities for the, for the zoning land. We need more housing in Pascagoula. But housing in the residential, single family, just ain't gonna happen. Now, down on the beach on Washington, and that area down there is a lot of vacant lots. And if you can afford the twenty-five, thirty, thirty-five thousand, or a lot, if you can afford to build a three-hundred thousand dollar house, more power, great. I'm glad you're able to do that. A lot of people are not. We need some affordable, reasonable-priced apartment rentals that are not forty to forty-five to fifty years old. We don't have that. We don't have anything with washers and dryers in. We don't have anything that has energy-efficient heating, air conditioning systems. We don't have anything that's reasonable for the, for the water bills and the gas bills because of all the older units. There are some, some of these developers, or some of the investors, are going through a process of updating them. And I think that was one of the ones we called. They said they were a little bit higher, like eighty percent, because they had a bunch of units off the market. So, that's the background of where we are. Y'all need, we need housing in Pascagoula. The housing will pay for itself. If an apartment complex is brand-new, and this is not brand-new, Colonial Manor is forty years old? I don't know. Way the same square feet was built, brand-new. Tax assessment's gonna hit it a little bit harder, a lot harder. So there's some things to consider. It does pay in some way. It brings in opportunities for younger folks to be able to have a place to live, work, and play that they don't have right now. Younger folks don't wanna go into some of the older units that they have a little higher concentration of trouble, okay? And just because it's Section 8 doesn't mean it's trouble. Section 8 isn't, I don't, I, I didn't have time to call and find out how many Section 8 accounts there are in Pascagoula and single-family, single-family homes, but I can assure you, there's a bunch of single-family homes around the property in Pascagoula. Probably thousands, probably into the thousands, at least. And I don't know how many of those are Section 8. But that's, that's not the problem. Section 8 is not the problem. That's a lie, that Section 8 is a problem. Never has been a problem. The problem is in the moms and the dads, and going to church, and saying, "Amen, and thank you, God, thank you, Jesus." That's part of the problem with some of the, some of the generations we're looking at today. They don't even know civics. I'm getting off the subject, sorry. But anyway, where we are today, we need used, modern, reasonably priced housing. And it just doesn't exist. You've got very few parcels, the last thing I wanna point out before I move on, is you have very, very few parcels of land that are left in Pascagoula. And, and how are you going to develop into a high density with something that you don't have that much of? You know, it's, there's, there are constraints in so many different ways with some of these parcels that just, it's not gonna happen at all. Like, down here on the beach, I think the mayor has had a piece of property right down there. He can develop that, because it's two, three feet elevation. And so there's very little property left in this city that could be developed. Some of it, most, a lot of it, adjoins multifamily that's zoned residential. I don't wanna go higher, every one of them, they're zoned residential. And so I, I told the planning commission, "Y'all need to look at that." I mean, it's money in the bank if y'all can help those people be able to upgrade, grow, and, and to expand, you know? It, it just doesn't, insane number of opportunities. If, if this was zoned correctly, there's, there's a... There's just, there's so many, so many of them that are not, they're not, they're not in compliance with, with their proper zoning, they're older units.
Mr. Novo, you've been going for about a little over fifteen minutes, so if you've been going for a little over fifteen minutes, if you can just kind of sum it up, that would be, that'd be great. Because I'm sure members of the council have questions.
Yes, sir. Well, I said I was ready to modify, I'm, I'm willing to modify our request, okay? And what I, Ann and I have talked, and what we're willing to do, if y'all would consider, humbly consider, I've got six of them, one, two, three, four, five, six. I've got enough, I got two more. All right, what, what this legal description is, is for the west side of the drainage. The west side, further away from Jonathan, okay? We're asking for a modification of our rezoning of the whole sixteen acres for just this, which we calculate would be less than six acres. I have a legal description that we have come up with, it's a, it's a, it's a legal description that a surveyor refused to do an exact. But that's a legal description that you'd almost refuse to redeem. So we're willing to modify our request for just that part. We would hope that that would be a little more amenable because we had had zero opportunities to make any kind of deal with this property that we purchased from you guys a couple of generations ago. We've had no interest. Nobody wants to develop, it's not big enough. This is in Pascagoula, you'd have so much expense to put in streets, and sewers, and water, and taking trees, and meeting codes after Hurricane Katrina, come on. They're not gonna be, you know, it's fifteen feet elevation, right? He told me it's fifteen feet. So we're gonna have to go up about four feet, that's a chain wall. It's not gonna be cheap. So if we could get into a MR3 zoning on the west sides, you know, and see what we can do there, it would help Ann and I tremendously to be able to work with the property. I told the planning commission.
Yeah.
I've had people, I was past president of home builders nineteen years ago. I have all kinds of contacts. Nobody was interested, nobody. After Hurricane, we had a couple that would fly by, you know, okay, if we can get the money from Jackson, we might buy it. And they just throw them out there. Nothing was ever signed, you know? But today, there is a possibility, Jimmy Lane told me, that if I could get something like this going, that he's got these plans that we can talk about. This is a fourplex, it's got fifteen to sixteen hundred square feet in each unit. And no guarantees, you know, hey, I told Donovan, and I'm telling y'all, you know, I'm not talking out the side of my mouth, but this is, this is just one thing I could try. And it might be I could partner with Jimmy on something like this. I've got a couple other people. Jimmy has these plans that were grown by, well, maybe he's still living, by Bonnaw. And so, this is about to be something that we could work with, don't wanna just kind of pass it down. It's fifteen to sixteen hundred square feet, two, two townhouses, two bedrooms, two living beds, washing rooms. You're not gonna find anything like it around the bay area.
Sir? I was just gonna say, if that's it, then, well, is there anyone else here to speak in favor of the resolution to rezone these parcels of land located between Douglas and Ingalls Avenue? All right.
I got one last little thing, one more.
Please make, please make it the last one, sir.
It's not just the possibility of a few fourplexes or a few eightplexes that we might be able to do something with this property. It's also having the opportunity, look, y'all, there's a need for millennials, younger folks, and there's also a need, need for folks like myself that are getting a assisted living. Might be a possibility in this zoning. We're not gonna be able to do a thing with this property, not a thing with it, the way it's been zoned. It's just gonna continue to make these folks over here on Jonathan happy because nobody's behind them. You know, but it needs to pay for itself. Mayor Coe had them put this property on the market because they were offered, on Jonathan Street, they were offered a park. And you may not, you guys may not have been there, but they turned it down. So, Mayor Coe said, "Well, let's sell it." I was, I was there. You know? And, but it's, these, something needs to be done with it. Not gonna do so a whole lot, just sitting there, other than just taxes on the land. If we, if we could grow it, we could build it, they would come, people, you bring people that is working in East Bank, instead of going to Alabama, to stop here and live here. Makes a lot of, you're spending thirty, forty thousand dollars in Jerry Leans and Walmart here in Pascagoula. That's the difference of what new construction is.
Does any member of the council have any questions for Mr. Novo?
Well, I'd just like to make a comment. I'm gonna make a motion to deny the rezoning. But, you know, if you can get with Donovan, and if you can bring a plan to him on what's gonna be built, all I hear is, "It may be this, it may be that." You know, "I need to, I might sell it, I might not sell it, I might partner with somebody." There is no planned plan here. It's just, you know, we deal with apartments all the time here lately. You got people that, that own them from Florida, you know, you build them, they sell them, they're from Florida, they don't pay the water bills, they don't take care of the people that live there. And so, you know, if you can bring us a plan on what's gonna be built, something you can sign off on for a ten-year period that says, "This is what we're gonna market, this is gonna be the price to live here," then, then maybe we would consider it. But I make a motion, we'd approve the resolution to deny the rezoning of the area between Douglas and Ingalls Avenue.
Mr. Novo?
I'm sorry. We're all home here, okay?
We're all home, but there is order to the meeting. You have twenty minutes to speak, and I'm just, now it's Mr., it's the council's time to speak.
Go ahead.
Okay? All right, there's a motion, and there's a second to deny the application. Is there any further discussion about the council?
Mr. Vero, the gentleman that deals in that area, are there any other concessions that oppose this action? Just four? Others just there that, that are just not here?
Yeah, there's two more at the planning meetings.
Okay, okay, thank you.
All right, should we give a further comment? Mr. Novo, I do join in Mr. Tipton's, Councilman Tipton's comment about, I've never, I've been on this council for two and a half years, I've never agreed to a rezoning in the blind, which is kind of what I think we're doing. Now, I understand your frustration. I can easily understand your frustration about not being able to market the property, but it is a tremendous risk to not only this council, but to the neighbors, to simply rezone without some sort of project as to what will be there. Not, "This is what we're thinking about," or "I've got plans from a draftsman who's now deceased." I'm talking to Jimmy, Jimmy, Jimmy Lane, those things. You just, you just gave up your time to rebuttal, sir. Those are things that we wanna hear as a council before we make a decision to rezone property, and especially rezone property that's going to exacerbate the problem of its being split zoned. So, is any other member of the council have any other questions or comments they wish to make? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion to deny the rezoning application for land located between Douglas and Ingalls Avenue, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion denied.
Well, y'all sold the gas company, and I don't know what you're gonna sell next.
All right. Mr. Scruggs, we've got an item six Z on the agenda. Is that something we have to consider?
It's right here. No, I mean, the way we advertise is, you know, new public hearings launch for planning board in one of the councils, being that we have a public hearing scheduled for tonight for this particular application, it is required to be on the agenda, in case somebody appears for this. But it's, it's my recommendation that we table it, become some planning board table it. We'll readvertise it for January.
Okay, a little out of the ordinary.
Yeah, very out of the ordinary, yeah.
Yeah, okay. Is there a motion to table a request that's item six Z? Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye. All right, now we'll move to the consent agenda, other than the item that was removed, seven B is a factor. Does any member of the council have any question about an item that appears on the consent agenda? Hearing none. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended?
True.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed? All right, now to the city manager items that would be what was seven B, now eight A, that is the resolution to approve Compton Task Order Number Zero Zero Six for MCC Park Improvements Project. This is for you.
I'll defer to Mr. Tipton. This is the task order for MCC Park Improvements. These funds are being utilized through the CBT funding, Superior Source Funding, to improve the park there. Mr. Tipton?
Yeah, the reason I asked for it being removed is I would actually like to make a motion to table this until after we meet with the Recreation Commission in January. The, this is, and by all means, I wanna continue to improve MCC Park. I think there's been some interest in the county participating in this, and I think we can get some or most of this done. But I wanna meet with the Recreation Commission, I wanna get the input from the new city manager when he comes in, Mr. Silverman, and find out exactly what we can do. I mean, I've got a drawing that was done probably in twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen, that includes an entryway, includes basketball courts, includes more parking, and I would love to continue to work towards doing this plan. I think when we pass the prepared food tax, one of the things on there was to improve that park, build some basketball courts, light it basketball courts, I think it said on the flyer that it was put out. So, I would very much like to continue to try to improve this, but I think there's some things that we can do with the Rec Commission's input to put this plan together. But I'm, I'm not, as of tonight, I'm not ready to pass the task order based on, I'm not even sure exactly where the plan came from, but, but I would like to table it until we meet with the Rec Commission, get their input. But I would very much like to continue to improve that facility.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. I'd like some discussion on this, since the consent agenda, by approving that, we have named an acting city engineer, that's Jeff Clemmons, who is here tonight. And he has been involved not only with this item in particular, but with some of the issues dealing with recreational, long-term planning, strategic planning for this community, both as an engineer, as a private individual. Before we decide to table it or not, I'd at least like to hear from Jeff as to what impact this would have if it were approved tonight, this particular task order to further expansion or development of MCC Park. What would be the benefits of that? And the other thing I'd like to hear is, we did spend, as a community, years looking at recreational, long-term planning for the city. A lot of that discussion was focused on where to build a sports, baseball, softball complex, whether it was gonna be out at this property or in downtown Pascagoula. And, and I can't think of any individual, I'd like to hear from more of the Jeff Clemmons as to this particular task order, how it falls into the overall plans for MCC Park, and, and what the future holds. So Jeff, if you could come up and just talk to us for a couple of minutes. So Jeff, if you could come up and just talk to us for a couple of minutes.
First of all, thank you for passing y'all's need for an interim city engineer. We're honored, you know, we've been here a long time, and we appreciate the opportunity to serve in that capacity, whether it's for a day or a month or whatever, but I know there's some reasons it came about for it, and we appreciate your faith in us, so. MCC, as, I'll give you a brief history, I'll try not to ramble on about it, but, you know, several years ago, there was a group of active citizens, most of us were involved, you know, in some capacity with sports or recreation in the city, whether it be through involvement in the baseball league, football, or whatever. Most of us had kids, some grandkids, you know, involved in Pascagoula for quite some time, so the role of this group was to develop a direction, not just for a baseball complex or not just for a football field or a soccer complex, but a recreation, you know, holistic look. Several people here were involved with it, so part of that was looking at the MCC Park area, the soccer fields, and specifically where the two baseball, the baseball and softball field are at, which, as you know, have been used for more than that through years. There used to be Black Football League out there that went on for years and, you know, kind of got dormant for a while, and then what has happened now has really revitalized. I mean, it's, some of the features around it maybe aren't all that desirable, but the fields themselves are two of the nicest fields on the coast now, so it's, it's a credit to those involved with that, both on the city side and the private side, that, you know, that exists now, so. But in looking at MCC Park as a whole, there was a lot of different scenarios, you know, examined. It included interaction with MCC with the soccer complex, whether it be connecting them via a nature trail or a walking path. It was even looked at to extend the road around the soccer complex to where it would, where it ends at the north, to where it would hook up there and extend all the way down to the south, along the new parcel that was acquired by the city, and tie back into Orchard Road to make a, you know, loop around the entire thing. Numbers for all the different items with that, you know, ranged anywhere from half a million to over six million, you know, depending on how elaborate things got. Once the decision was made for that area was not gonna have baseball fields associated with it, and that project moved in its direction to where it is now, MCC was kind of reexamined, okay, what needs to happen there, knowing that it's not gonna be influenced by a larger sports complex being just to the north of it or adjacent to it. So ultimately, about two years ago, the city actually passed a plan then, under a task order, to start down the road of putting together a package to do improvements, to the tune of around three million, and that was right around the same time that some of the financial issues, you know, evolved or came on in the city, so that task order was basically halted. Frank, if I miss saying something, just let me know, but that project was, I think, the drawing you were holding up, Scott, which was kind of a culmination of many ideas that was kind of brought, reined in to make it a reasonably sized project, although it sounds colloquial, I mean, it was two, three million ultimately, but it included, you know, improvements to the baseball side, a really nice basketball court, or two courts with lights and a bathroom facility that would be on the parcel of land that the city ultimately acquired adjacent to the MCC. So once the brakes were put on that, it, you know, just kind of set dormant for the best part of a year or two, and this most recent task order was presented to the city based on a request to pay, we've got some money that has become available under an ADA access grant, and I believe those funds had certain restrictions to what an alley could be spent. But there were some gray areas, you know, it could be spent on walkways, that, you know, that were provided to access either bathrooms or handicap parking areas, and also any ancillary work to that such a drainage or to improve the conditions around it were eligible items, so we pulled the reins back in further to come up with a project that could utilize those monies, and in that same, or in that same, those same discussions, the county had offered potentially to either put in a contribution, and I never was clear whether it was hard cash or if the county was going to provide services to help maybe pave the parking lot, or do some of the drainage work around or provide field, you know, whatever it was, the county indicated they would, you know, potentially be of assistance. And then the third part of the money, whether it was stated that there was some rec money that potentially, somebody had committed to that, you know, potentially would be available for some of these improvements. So we tried to structure a phased project that had improvements to the baseball side, mainly drainage and parking, really wasn't doing anything to the field. There was some items put in there as a third phase for some new bathrooms, like a, that would cover the bathroom and provide a comfort space, and then the other phase was of course the basketball courts, which only included basketball courts, it did not have a bathroom facility tied to it directly, you know, thinking it was ultimately there'd be one nice bathroom for, to be utilized by both sides of the park, so. And then we actually, I think that task order was approved initially, and then it got halted as well, or maybe, I don't remember whether it got approved initially, but there was minimal work on it. We did the estimates, we came up with some different concepts, and then that's basically where it stopped. So this was an effort, I guess, to, to try to push it forward, you know, to take advantage of those ADA access monies, as well as whatever the county was willing to do. So that's my knowledge of how the project progressed and where it's at currently. To some of, other, Stephen's other comments, the park itself, I don't know if you've all been out there recently, but, I mean, in my lifetime here, you know, it's never looked better out there. The contributions that the city and the private side have made, has really made it into a desirable place to go, rather than, you know, just somewhere to go swap mosquitoes off of them. The, and Lee and Johnny are here, they can probably speak better to the actual use of it, because they're out there every day, but, you know, it's, it hadn't just been a private school project using it, it's just been other public schools during the summer, they play, you know, tournaments there, and of course, the basketball courts are heavily used. If you had a nicer basketball court, you know, I think that would really be a nice amenity for the city, because what's there now, y'all have all seen it, I mean, it's, it's not very desirable, and it's basically an old parking lot with a basketball goal thrown upon it. It's very dangerous at night, you know, there's a bad problem that, you know, there's nowhere to get a bathroom out there for people that are playing on the weekends or at night, you know, on the court, so. It wasn't just baseball to be looked at, it was the whole park, so.
Look, let me interrupt you for a second, Jeff. The task order here, and I try to distill it into something other than engineering use, which I'm not familiar with, but, but does that cover the construction of the new basketball court? Because that's kind of where I'm falling in on this. Normally, I wouldn't have minded a table, but if the task order is designed to basically fold the existing, as you said, the old blacktop basketball court, and to create new, the new basketball area that we all, I think, agree is badly needed, is there a need to table this while we duly, and Scott is exactly right, consider how we're going to use the balance of the rec bond monies, county monies, and what monies we can gather to further enhance the amenities of MCC Park? That's, that's kind of where I'm falling on this right now.
Well, the, the phasing that's included in that task order, we had to call it a phase one, two, and three, and that was basically done so that the immediate money, the ADA access money, that, I'm not gonna use the term free money, it's not Pascagoula tax law, it is federal tax law, it's just granted to the city, or a federal grant, rather. That had to be kind of, we separated it out, because that was the first part that, hey, you've got money, let's use it and get something built for it. That was the phase one, well, it was called phase one, and it mainly was parking improvements and drainage improvements around the parking area and the backside of the field, and that would in fact, you know, destroy your basketball court. So the other phase, which was deemed phase two, and not necessarily intended to be time sequential, it was just a separate phase, that was building the two new basketball courts over on the new piece of property. That could certainly be done first or in parallel activity with the other, it's just the ADA access money could not be used for it, so it was either gonna have to be Pascagoula rec money or county money, or county contribution that would help construct it. And, and same thing with the last phase, which was the concession slash bathroom building, you know, again, that was an item that you couldn't use that initial grant money on, so it was thrown into a separate phase and was a little bit larger than everything else. So it gave the ability to pick and choose what you could do immediately versus what you could plan to do down the road, and if and when you committed front of it.
If we did this particular task order, which includes the demolition of the existing basketball court, what timeframe are you looking at between its demolition and when this new facility will be created, for this new basketball court?
Well, if you did it first, and you did not start the other one, then it would be, you know, until such time you started the other. If you started the basketball court first, you could in fact do it and get the basketball court completed or near completion before you started the other, so.
Fortunately, we only have the one task order in front of us tonight.
Well, no, all that was included in that task order. The task order would need some clarity as to which phases we would actually work on.
But, but answer my question.
So it, it included everything, but it's kind of like a hollapart. If you only wanted to do the two phases, you could only ask to do the two phases, and that's all we would have done.
So Jeff, on, on the timeline, I know baseball season, typically they're gonna start practicing in February, and baseball season's over by May. I mean, is this something that y'all are trying to put through to do during the season?
Initially, it was, you know, because this came up several months ago, it was intended to try to be a project that would be completion or near completion, you know, by the time of season, sorry. That would be difficult, if not impossible.
Yeah, but this may be a frank question, is there any risk of the grant money, we don't have to spend it in twenty nine, hey, we can spend it in twenty one?
That's correct. We just have a certain percentage of annual thing that you have to spend remaining allowance for CBG purposes, but this would not affect that.
So it sounds like if we approved it tonight, I mean, and we started it immediately, I mean, there would be, there would be a problem with others accessing the site if, again, the task order is approved and the funds are permitted and the work is begun.
Yeah, if you started everything at once, what would happen is in about, yeah, three months to four months, you would start construction, you'd start demoing the basketball facility, they may start working simultaneous on the other, but there would be some time where, obviously, it would have a service.
Under the circumstances, making a thirty-day delay doesn't really, it doesn't affect anything else, in fact, it might facilitate, you know, the, as far as continued access to that property, you know, during the spring and during baseball season, I guess is what I'm saying. Do you understand my question? Saying, if we approved it tonight, if we didn't grant Councilman Tipton's motion, and again, immediately, we'd have pretty problems with access during baseball season, but a thirty-day delay might in fact, I mean, there's no way it's going to start during baseball season with a thirty-day delay, and would end up commencing, we presume, sometime in May, at the earliest.
Yeah, I mean, as it stands right now, if, if we started tomorrow morning, designing all this, you know, your construction would not be starting under a public bid process, you know, until April, March or April. But again, you know, backing up all this started several months ago, so.
I understand. Any further questions for interim city engineer? All right, there's a motion on the table to table this. Any further discussion for members of the council? All those in favor of the motion to table item eight A, the resolution approving Compton Task Order zero zero six for MCC Park Improvements, signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Okay?
Thank you all. And if anybody needs some of the background information or the most current, you know, rendering of the concepts out there, by all means, let me know and we'll get those to you. I don't know how those were ever disseminated to everyone, so.
I would like to see those, and Frank, before your departure, I don't know if there's a way that you can send an email to Jase Fryland to ask him, you know, can we coordinate a meeting, or can they come to the meetings? Or do a work session or something like that? I, you know, this is, we've got the money now, it's just what's left for the rec bond, I'd like to go ahead and see if we can earmark that.
Actually, I took a meeting with Mr. Fryland and Mr. Van, who chaired last year of the Rec Commission last week, and they're waiting on word from you guys after your first meeting in January, when y'all would like to have that done.
And, and just based on the way I've seen it done in the past, is they can actually invite us to one of their meetings? It seems to be more open and it's better discussion when we go to their meeting instead of them coming out.
Sure.
But they would like to invite us to the next January meeting.
And, and I can gladly give those documents to the Rec Commission also.
We can give any of that, that'd be great.
Yeah, sorry.
Thank you all. All right. The next item is.
Mr. Verro, I'm gonna just, here to introduce new deputy chief, do not come in to the council in case you're in a meeting for.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Anything else, Mike? All right. They'll move on to the document of claims. Is there any question about an item on the document of claims? Hearing none. Is there a motion to approve the document of claims?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye. No items were there under the mayor council items? Did anybody sign up, hearing? Okay. There's, before I entertain a motion to go into a closed session, regarding executive session, I do want to take this opportunity to tell everyone that we did receive the resignation of our acting city manager, effective December thirty-one, and I want to say a few words about Frank. Frank is a Pascagoula cheerleader to the core. He has been with this council through some very trying times, ever since this existing council took office. He is going to be missed. Frank, your institutional knowledge, for lack of a better term, has been invaluable to me personally, and I believe to the rest of this council. We are really sorry to see you go, but, but we appreciate your service. I know your community, appreciate your service, and, and want to thank you for everything you've done on behalf of the city of Pascagoula, and I personally want to wish you the best of your future development. Thank you, sir. I appreciate that.
I want to say to Frank, my assistance, open my word, I want to be to express that they're gonna miss you, that you've been a great service to this city and to them, and my wife will tell me to tell you aloha.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate that very much.
All right. Is there a motion to go into a closed session to determine whether or not an executive session is needed?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed? All right. You're more than welcome to stay, but we appreciate you, everyone coming, we thank you very much.